Guys, meeting call to order. Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
It's me. Hey, it's me, sorry.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
We are on to silent prayer moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 7, 2020, and posted on the bulletin board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now on to special events applications.
Just give me one second. Just give me one second.
Okay. 8179 should be her number.
Yep, yep, yep. I'm just looking for it. Don't see her on here.
8211.
8211, ah, okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first application before you is for the Drumming Circle, which would be in Veterans Plaza. Second is Tai Chi, also to be held in Veterans Plaza. Next is the annual Asbury Park Sunset Farmer's Market. The Greenwood Park Concert Series. The Second Baptist Church. A community event and gospel extravaganza. The Sunset Lake Nature Walk. And Cathedral International Ocean Baptism. Are there any questions on any of the applications? Okay, if there are no questions, I would ask that the Mayor and Council approve these contingent on, number one, social distancing rules being followed, and all attendees must be wearing masks in conjunction with the governor's new mandate that came out today. Also, too, these approvals are contingent on whatever forthcoming executive orders may come out, which from the governor's office, which would supersede any of our approvals. So all the applicants have been informed that approval is contingent.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Alicia. Next.
Okay, we are on to items to be presented. The first item is geese control lighting by the Wesley Lake Commission.
Just unmute Gail Rosewater from the Wesley Lake Commission. Hold on one second. Here we go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, good evening. I want to say thank you for letting us talk to you tonight about the problem. The geese problem has gotten worse, and the Wesley Lake Commission wants to use a multi-primed approach to address the geese problem. And the main reason being, as we're charged with watching over the quality of the water, we sample the water every week with, under Monmouth University as volunteers. I do it myself. And the lake is, we're seeing that the lake is over fertilized with nutrients, some of which come from goose poop. And it's caused, causes more pond weed to grow, and there's so much oxygen in the water from that that it kills the animal life. Also, near the outfall into the ocean, they have detected bacteria, which is from fecal indicator bacterium, which decreases, decreasing the geese would improve that condition. It's, it can cause infections in people should somebody, you know, be in the lake or fall into the lake, especially near the eastern end. So we, we want to be aggressive, and we want to, you know, start oiling the eggs. We don't know that a dog chaser is appropriate for our lake, but we would consider it. We want to use something called Rejectit, which Deal Lake has had, and I quote Don Brockle, great success at the boat ramp at Onbimbler using this product. It's a grape-flavored product, not harmful to humans, but the geese don't like it, and so it shooes them away. And we want to use the lights. We want to install the lights. And Keith Fury from the Wesley Lake Commission is going to talk specifically about the lights that we're proposing. The commission voted at the last meeting to purchase, and they would be installed in the lake. The last four digits of Keith's phone are 0151, and I believe he's on. If you could unmute him.
0501, was that?
0151.
0151. Uh huh, there we go.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Hi.
Yes.
I can hear you, Keith. Go ahead.
Okay. Hello, everybody. I had sent in some, I think through Gail, I put together some decks to send in so everyone could see what the company Away With Geese, their lights looked like. Did everyone get a chance to look at that at all?
It's on the screen right now, Keith.
Yes.
Oh, great. Okay. So I did a lot of research, guys, and, you know, overall, there's a lot of things we can do and can't do, and this seems to be a pretty progressive way of dealing with the geese. And as well as having to deal with the amount of geese we already have, this is something that will get us ahead next year as well. So we, Gail spoke quickly about the plan that we need to get in place, whether it's the Rejectit, whether it's the eggs. So we need to get some sort of experts to handle some of that stuff, and it looks like the other lakes already have that. Why they didn't communicate it to us and share that they were going to be doing this stuff, because basically what they did was chase some of their geese into our lake. So now we have, last time I counted, we have over 50 geese in the lake right now. So if you walk around Wesley, there is poop literally everywhere. All the fire lanes and Ocean Grove, all the sidewalks, and then all around Asbury Park as well. Mostly at the west end where it's shallow. That's where they get in and out the most. So it's really getting out of hand. It's, it's pretty unsightly. And then I think with the amount of people using the lake and around the lake, because they get into the beach, it's pretty, it's not good for either one of our communities, Asbury Park or Ocean Grove. So if you look at these Away With Geese lights, I spoke to their team for about an hour, and I also sent you the site map as to where they go. So they basically run down the middle of the light, the lake, rather. There's about 10 units, and they sit about nine inches out of the water, which is the same height as a goose head, I guess, when it's sitting in the water, resting. These lights basically disturb these guys because they don't sleep with the lights blinking because they have no eyelids. This won't affect any of the other birds or animals that are in the water. It's really just the geese themselves, and it doesn't matter what species of geese we have, because it'll do all of them. They're not supposed to be overly obtrusive to humans, or look like a crazy spotlight or anything. So I've heard good things, and I did some research, and I spoke to Thomas Quentin, who is the superintendent of public work down at Edison. And he manages a huge amount of property out by the George Washington Bridge, where they had a gigantic geese problem. And I spoke to him for about an hour, and he sent me his site maps. They've got huge soccer fields, they have water with docks, and they had everything covered with poop since they started using the light in January of 2019. And they've done everything they said, and he literally quoted everything. He said they've done the dogs, they did 12-inch-high fences, they did all those things. They said these have definitely been effective and had a huge amount of results from them. So, but you do, you do also need to stay on top of it in the other methods that we mentioned. So, you know, this to me seems to be a pretty proactive thing. They're guaranteed for six months. I think we're going to have better results in the beginning of the year than of now, but I do feel we should get them in the water as soon as possible. So if you guys have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
It's John Moore. Thank you very much for your homework. Thank you, guys, for all the work you do with Wesley Lake. So who's paying for this?
The Wesley Lake Commission. The Wesley Lake Commission.
Who's installing them?
DPW.
Neptune?
Yeah, we're, we're requesting the DPW install them. If not, Doug.
Neptune DPW?
We've asked both DPWs to get back to us on installation.
Okay.
Installation, John, installation is very simple, John. It's just literally a cinder block with a nylon cord that floats this to the surface. It's pretty simple. There's no wiring or anything.
I'm not shooting the messengers and everything. It's just, again, if you were on the meeting, two to three meetings ago, there was an outfall pipe that collapsed, and Asbury Park picked up the entire fee because Neptune refused to pay for any of it. So again, it's like, this is a joint venture between Asbury Park and Neptune that seems like anything to do with either money or work. Neptune, like, just says, oh, we're busy, put it on Asbury Park, and believe me, we are shorthanded as it can be. So it'd be deeply appreciative if you can get Neptune to step to the plate and give us some help.
Well, Doug McQueen had, this is Gail, Doug McQueen had also offered to go ahead and install it, because like Keith said, it is, these are solar-powered, and the installation is quite simple. I hear your message, Mayor Moore. I understand exactly what you're talking about. And I believe that Eileen was going to talk to Donna about having a conversation with Neptune, about sharing costs in a couple of different areas.
Yeah, and so, Gail, just so you know, I have reached out to them, and I have not heard anything back. So if you guys want to facilitate a meeting like you did last time, I'd be more than happy to participate in that.
Okay, I will do that.
Yes, and Gail, it's Eileen. I just want to say thanks to you and Keith for this presentation. I know that, as you mentioned, Don Brockle has been working with the product at Deal Lake, and there's been geese chasers at Sunset Lake, and nothing going on at Wesley Lake. So as you noted, all the geese have left the other two lakes and gone to Wesley, and I think we need to work more collaboratively among the three lakes to prevent this problem from getting any worse, and hopefully make it a lot better.
Absolutely. I mean, it shouldn't be that hard to make this communication a little bit more streamlined. So we've got to work harder at that because it's ridiculous.
Yep, I agree.
Moore, again, one last question. As much as that gets guaranteed for six months, what's the lifetime of one of these lights?
Yeah, I think it depends on the amount of use, she says, but I think it could be up to a couple of years.
Okay, and as far as when Neptune says no, and Doug needs somebody to row the boat, I'll row the boat.
I'll get out there on my surfboard, John, if I have to.
Listen, you guys have me, too.
It'd just be nice, and I know Donna will stop the meeting if you guys can facilitate and get Neptune to come to the table, but again, it just can't be, it's like, it's a one-way street. It's like Bond Street. It's just like, throw everything to Asbury Park, throw everything to Asbury Park, and truthfully, the major pollution to that lake is from Neptune.
Right.
Well, I've, we've also asked that both DPWs could start thinking about power washing the sidewalks, because it's pretty unsightly on both sides. And, Gail, I don't know if you've heard back from either of your requests, have you?
No, I have not heard back from either with my request, no.
But we really need some help on this because it's really pretty disgusting, and like, we need some responses. People need to tell us no, they need to tell us yes, because we need to be able to move on this stuff. And if we're going to have both members of DPW, Neptune and Asbury Park sitting on our commission meetings, they need to, they need to reply to this stuff.
Totally agree with you. If you're not getting replies, then I would expect Gail to get in touch with Donna or Eileen, and, you know, get in touch with Donna, that you're not getting replies. That's unacceptable to me. So again, I appreciate Keith, Gail, the entire committee, Barbara, T, everybody that's on this committee, everything you're doing for the lake, and good luck.
Thank you.
Great. I appreciate your time, guys.
This is Donna. I just have one quick question. Will these lakes with the paddle boats, what if the paddle boats hit them? Is there a problem with that? And are there any lakes that these lights are in, in New Jersey, that we could look at to see what they look like at night?
You'd have to go up to Edison is the only place, I think, in New Jersey who's using them right now. The company's from Ohio, and they use them all over the country. I'm sure if we speak to the owner of the swan boats, because it's only going to help her, to say, hey, you got to ask these people not hit the lights, I'm sure we can work on that. I also think they're all supposed to be pretty durable.
Right, and that's something we can talk offline with. I just don't want to get into a situation where the paddle boats hit the lights and they break, and, you know, the city's on the hook to replace them, because we just don't have a budget for it. So we can talk about that offline.
I agree.
Hi, this is Yvonne. I just have one question. These lights sit low in the water, so they won't be annoying to residents who are around the lake?
Well, that's the goal, Yvonne, is that they're not supposed to be, but in all honesty, what's more annoying than all the geese who are basically harassing anyone who walks down the other path, and all the amount of poop that's everywhere? So I feel like if we don't at least try this, the only other options we can have are hoping that the repellent works, and then having dog chasers and laser chasers. So I feel like no matter what we do, either you have to physically chase these animals away with hoses, or lasers, or noise, or they simply won't leave. So that's the whole idea of these lights, is that they're supposedly pretty unobtrusive. There's, there's 10 lights that'll be spaced out the entire way, if you look at the map. So I feel like if we look at them and be kind of careful, and see if we can shield them, at least on the Ocean Grove side, where there's a lot of closer residents, where there's some tree cover and those kinds of things, where, you know, someone sitting on their porch, you know, move it five or 10 feet over, and we put it in, we could be kind of careful about it. So I'm personally going to see if I can oversee where they go and try to help out, because I live in Ocean Grove, and I live on the lake, and I want to make sure that I'm not staring at one of these things either.
Okay, thank you.
These guys are destroying, these guys are destroying my grass as we speak. It's terrible.
Anything else?
No, more again, and I thank you both very much, and again, I thank you the entire committee, and again, if there's a lack of communications between our representatives or DPW, just let Donna know, and we'll fix that.
Thanks, John. As always, I appreciate your time.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, we are on to the second presentation, which is an update on reopen Asbury Park by Michael Manzello, Director of Transportation and Deputy City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers of the public. I'm here tonight to provide a quick update on the reopen Asbury Park plan, which, as you know, has been in place for about just over three weeks now. And the goal of this program, this pilot program, was to provide public space to expand outdoor dining and retail, and provide for social distancing and opportunities for recreation for residents. As you are aware, we are in New Jersey, the state of New Jersey is in stage two of the governor's reopening plan, which includes everything from outdoor dining and expanded retail to opening personal care and other small amount of indoor activities. The one activity that was part of stage two, which has not been given the green light yet, is limited indoor dining. And while we have been very successful at expanding the outdoor opportunities for our restaurants and retail spaces, the limited indoor dining is going to continue to impact specifically the food and beverage establishments going forward. So in evaluating, again, this is a pilot program, and the city is evaluating, evaluating every aspect of the program every day, and as conditions change with the pandemic. And as we are evaluating it, we did an on, we conducted an online survey that was sent to the business owners downtown. Total of 57 businesses and 37 responses were gathered from those business owners. And the questions that were asked were about impact to the, to business with the reopen plan, opportunities that have been realized, challenges that have been realized, questions about some expanded closure hours and times, and any other changes that were recommended. So I'm going to just summarize some of the responses that we've received from those businesses so that we can further provide input to any potential changes in the future. So we asked what impact has expanded outdoor dining and retail provided for your business, and you can see there the result, anywhere from strong detriment to strong benefit. And you will see that a large majority of the businesses have, have either had no impact or some or strong benefit from our expansion of, of outdoor dining and outdoor retail spaces. The next question we asked was what opportunities has the closure of streets to vehicular traffic provide to your business and the downtown as a whole? This was an open-ended question, but we were able to kind of categorize it into the, the four broad groups that, that you see here. So six businesses said they increased their business, six said they had more satisfied customers, 10 said there was no opportunity or no impact, and then 13 said increased foot traffic along the street. And then what challenges has the closure of streets to vehicular traffic provided to your business in the downtown as a whole? The highest number of response was, was no challenge. The next highest was some loss of access or parking right in front of the establishment, which is obvious since we've closed traffic to vehicular traffic. A few businesses said too crowded, some said not being open seven days a week was a challenge, the weather does not fit their business model, and one business had ADA access challenge. We then asked the businesses downtown, would you be in favor of keeping Cookman Avenue closed to vehicular traffic seven days a week, or at least Labor Day weekend? And the overwhelming, again, majority of the responses from these businesses was yes, 26 yes and seven no. So taking all that into account, and reviewing with the various city departments, and understanding kind of what the challenges are and opportunities might be, what the city is proposing at this point is to expand the program in terms of number of days of the week that the closure, the closure of vehicular traffic is in place. So what's being proposed is that from July 15 through at least Labor Day weekend, which would be September 7, that the 500 and 600 blocks of Cookman Avenue, which basically span from Bond Street to Bangs Avenue, would be closed to vehicular traffic seven days a week. And that, that would allow those businesses to, you know, the highest concentration of restaurants and retail spaces to be able to really invest and make the closure even that much better. What we're also proposing is the 700 block of Cookman to be closed to vehicular traffic on the weekends, from Friday to Monday at 7:00 AM, which is essentially what they, what is being done right now. Right now, those downtown streets are closed from Thursday afternoon through Monday morning. So again, the 500, 600 blocks of Cookman Ave will be closed seven days a week, the 700 block will be closed on the weekends, and the 600 block of Madison Avenue, there would be no change there. It would be closed to vehicular traffic each week, Thursday through Monday AM. There are some details that need to be worked out with all the businesses in terms of waste removal. We're, since the closure will be in place seven days a week, we're going to have to look to require businesses to bring the waste to the end of the block, as they will not be able to have garbage pickup during the week in front of their establishment. And we're going to ask all businesses to provide updated litter control plans and coordinate with them on those plans to make sure that garbage isn't unsightly and can be collected in a timely fashion, and still allow for the expanded vehicular closure. And then we're also going to be looking to put some additional loading zones on the side streets, Bond Street, Emery Street, and Bangs Avenue. The loading zones have, for the most part, worked very well, so we'll, with the closure moving at least on two blocks to a, to a full-time closure, we'll look to have additional loading zones provided to, to continue to provide any businesses that are doing curbside pickup, and also to accommodate the deliveries, to get the packages down the block. In addition, the last item to discuss is we, the city has come up with a plan to permit canopies on a temporary basis through the end of this year, only on private property, though. So this would only be on private property, and it would be a canopy, and the applicant would have to submit an application that would be reviewed by the city engineer, and the canopies will also be prohibited anywhere along the boardwalk due to the concern with wind. And again, this is just private property, and this is, again, a pilot application to allow private property canopies to kind of have a streamlined process to be approved. And that, in accordance with that, Resolution 2020-213 on tonight's agenda would permit that temporary application. Any questions?
Any questions?
Amy Quinn, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, Mike, I think I'd like to see a little bit more consistency. If, I don't want to change the hours on the 700 block and have different days and times than the Madison, Bangs, Bond block. So if we're, if we're doing a closure on Thursdays for all of these streets, from Thursday to Sunday, I'd like all of those streets to be closed at that time. And then if we're doing seven days for just those blocks on Cookman, that's fine, but for, I don't like three sets of times and days. I would much prefer two. So if, if that's something that we could work in, just add the 700 block to the, the Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And then I just want to mention, this, this would be kind of a, a moving target. So while we're closing two blocks on Cookman, we reserve the right to, seven days a week, we reserve the right to possibly close more of Cookman, less of Cookman, part of Madison, you know, some of the other streets, seven days a week, too. We're, we're kind of starting with Cookman and then seeing what works and what doesn't. Would that be, would that be kind of a fair statement?
That's absolutely a fair statement. This is a pilot program, and, you know, as we've, you know, gone through it the past few weekends, we've learned quite a bit about how it operates, and, you know, as business conditions change and conditions with pandemic change, we can definitely look to make further changes. But I, I think that the Thursday through Monday, that is something we could, we can look, definitely look into for this next phase.
And police and DPW support the, the blocks for seven days?
Yeah, I think one of the major benefits of, of making some of these, these closures to vehicular traffic seven days a week is that the street wouldn't have to be opened up and then closed again every week. And the police are actually in favor of, of, you know, making some of this a little more permanent, just to eliminate a lot of that work and moving of cars that needs to be done, and, and public works as well, in terms of, you know, putting out the barricades, moving them. A lot of that work would, would go away if it was seven days a week for a longer time period.
Okay, and then just a couple, a couple more questions. The white and orange barriers that we're using, the public art committee doesn't love them. So is there, you know, one we could take on the task of possibly decorating them or painting them, or unless you had other ideas of things that we could use to close the streets, other than the orange and white barricades?
Yeah, we're going to look to obtain, and by obtain, I mean borrow, some concrete barricades that will look at least a little more pleasant than the orange and white barricades, and would free those up to be used elsewhere. Now that this is going, you know, potentially on two blocks, at least going to a seven-day-a-week closure, we don't have to worry about moving the barricades as much, so we can substitute a concrete barricade instead of the orange and white in, on those blocks.
Okay, and then last question, related to the canopy. We've had periods of time where we've had, so putting it, the canopy. We've had periods of time where we've had, so putting it, the canopy, you know, allowing the canopies be tied to allowing the outdoor dining, because allowing the canopies till November thirtieth, I mean, there have been times where we've had major snowstorms in early November and late October. I don't know, I'm all for the canopies, I'm all for, I, I just get a little bit anxious through November thirtieth.
Yeah, I think that's some, I think that's something we can discuss. I, we, the only reason we selected November thirtieth was that was when the expanded outdoor dining and retail permits expire. So we're just keeping in line with that, but, but I think we can definitely look to change that end date for sure.
Uh, that's all I got.
Mike, this is Fred Raffetto, just mentioning with regard to Deputy Mayor Quinn's comment about the November thirtieth date, that date is included in Resolution number twenty twenty dash two thirteen, which is on tonight's agenda. So if there is a mindset to change that, we should do that at the time that the council considers that resolution later this evening.
Thanks, Fred.
You lost, you lost me, say that again.
Mayor, the, the date, the end date of November thirtieth is contained in the resolution that is on tonight's agenda that Mike referenced, dealing with the authorization for temporary canopies. So if council is of the mindset to change that date, perhaps make it earlier based on the concerns raised by the deputy mayor, that is something that you should resolve when that resolution is brought before you for action later on this evening. Because right now it says November thirtieth is the end.
Okay.
Or I should say, it's actually an either or, it's either November thirtieth or the date upon which, the effective date upon which the governor lifts the state of emergency, whichever is sooner.
Hi, and, and this is, this is Donna just chiming in. I would suggest, and Fred, correct me if you think this is a bad idea, we can just keep the, the resolution as is, and as we get through this process, if it's September, October, and we feel it's time to change that date, we can just pass another resolution changing that date. I think that might be easier.
That's, that's a fine alternative if you'd like.
Okay, more couple of questions. First, a comment to Amy's concerns, as much as people may not like orange and white, they're that color because of OSHA and P OSHA laws. You start screwing around with those colors, then you're going to lose all liability, you're going to be sued. Just, just a heads up, OSHA and P OSHA laws. As far as like, and I should have asked it before, Mike, I apologize, it seems like Prospect Avenue is not working out. And I know we want to have a street on the west side, so can we search for another street on the west side?
Yeah, I think we can look at some other options for sure on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
Thank you, Michael, for putting this plan together. It's pretty concise and I think it's, it's working for our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, not hearing any other questions or comments. We will now move on to matters from City Council.
This is Amin Chapman, and I just wanted to mention a project that we've been working on since March, and that will be free COVID testing with a testing site in Asbury Park. We began some discussions in March with some area physicians, county officials, Monmouth County Health Department, our social services director, Doug Schultz, and others to develop a, a plan for a testing site in our community. We did create, after exploring many options, we created a plan that we thought was a perfect fit for our community. And then we went on to explore various sites for COVID testing and looked most closely at the transportation center because there's the opportunity to provide both walk-up and drive-through testing. In the meantime, we've been trying to get funding for the last several months. We've had some disappointments and a few setbacks, but it looks like a private funder has now come forward to fund this COVID testing plan, and that it should begin in, in a couple of weeks. It will be free for members of our community, and we should have details shortly up on our website, I would say within the next few days. The other thing I just wanted to say is that if it's approved by City Council tonight, the Springwood Monday Night Concert Series will begin again on the thirteenth of July and run for seven weeks. It'll be a shorter season, but we'll at least be able to get some concerts in. They'll run from six to eight every Monday. And the Boardwalk Concert Band, which was generally on the boardwalk just south of Convention Hall, will move over to Bradley Park. So that's, that's all for me. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton?
Yes, I just want to comment on the testing. We've worked really hard to get this happening in the city, and I'm so pleased that we're going to be able to offer testing to our residents in Asbury Park, within Asbury Park. So stay tuned, watch the website, or reach out to our social services department for further information. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kendall?
Yes. I'm sitting here thinking about what Arlene was saying about opening up the park Monday, which I think could be a good idea, but I'm just curious about parking. I think we might need to think about putting more bike racks out in the park somewhere if we have the space, because you know they're building across the street, and a lot of people last year parked their cars across the street from the park. And I just think it'd be a good idea so that people want to ride in their bikes and not park it all over Asbury. And I think we need to consider that or think about it as possible. Another thing that's on my mind is, I'd just like to know for my own behalf, who, who demanded or allow the turf club to be, I guess they call it black art? I think it, it just, it bothers me when I went by there and see these people putting up, you know, what they call black art. To me, that's not black art, and it kind of was offensive, and I received a lot of calls and talked to a lot of people about that. There's a lot of ways they could have went about it, you know? And I don't know if they asked questions to Donna or the mayor or the city council, because I didn't hear anything about it. I was a little bit shocked when I saw it. But I'm just, those are questions we can, you can, Donna or the committee can talk to me about later. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
I don't, I don't have any, any, anything to bring up citywide. I will say though that the art on the turf club was approved by the Asbury Park Public Art Commission. They did come to us and present an application, and, and the committee voted on it approvingly. So just FYI on that one.
Mayor Moore?
Yeah, and no problem, maybe we can just get an update what the art commission approves in the future so we're, we all know what's going on. I kind of thought it was neat. I was on a conference call today with every mayor in Monmouth County and freehold director Arno. Monmouth County is coming out with a small business initiative to give up to $10,000 as a grant, not a loan, a grant that's going to be forgiven. It's not been announced yet, it's going to be presented tomorrow night, the freeholder board. It's going to be for businesses of fifty employees or less. Again, it's $10,000. You have to like prove payment before you get reimbursed. It can't be for future payment, but it can be anything COVID nineteen-related. It can be your rent, it can be your mortgage, not interest. And the application is going to be out, and you have plenty of time to apply. It's a great initiative, we're going to get more information on it and to help all small businesses. And as soon as we get the information from them, we will get it to every business in Asbury Park. I know Amy's going to try to get freeholder Arno to talk to the business committee, so they get it to all the businesses. But again, this is $10,000 grant forgiven, any money you spent on COVID, from March fifteenth to now, in the future. The caveat is, it's got to be money already spent. It can't be like, oh, I'm going to spend money. But again, when we get more details, we'll pass it along. I know Amy will pass it along. A great, great thing being done by the county. So I know there'll be like two hundred businesses in Asbury Park applying for this. Besides that, I ask everybody to do what the governor finally said today. Please keep on wearing your masks, please keep on social distancing, and just please everybody stay safe.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Not sure what's going on. We're on to matters from the city manager.
I have nothing tonight, Melody, thanks.
You're welcome. Matters from the city attorney?
And I have nothing at this time either, Melody.
We are on to the public participation. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it, Kendall.
Second?
Clayton.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
One opposed. Members of the public may participate by dialing star nine on your phone to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. I will give you a warning when you have one minute remaining. Okay, I am calling upon Keith. Please state your name and address for the record.
Can't hear him.
All right, I'm going to move on to some, to the next person. All right, let's move on to the next person. I am moving on to Chris Jarra. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Jarra, Emory Street, Asbury Park. I'm the operations manager for Asbury Park's electric scooter program. We also have Adam Greenstein in the meeting. He's been working with the city on bikes and scooters since 2017. I sent a letter to Mayor Moore and the city council this past Monday with my thoughts about the city's decision to delay the program launch until the fall of this year. With the current changes that the city is making to our streets and parking, I think it's worth discussing how the scooter program can benefit the reopen Asbury Park program. We'd like to ask the city to consider allowing us to put out one hundred scooters this summer. We understand from last meeting's discussion that lack of revenue share was a sticking point for the city. We'd like to see, to consider our offer of a revenue share. That's all I have. Thank you for letting us speak tonight.
Okay, are you done?
Yes, I am done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and we'll get back to you.
Okay, we are on to five, three, three, four. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi there, Maureen Nevin, Three D O Lake Court. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Maureen.
Okay, good. Yeah, now, you just announced this $10,000 grant. What, what program is that coming from? Is that state, local? I understand you'll answer me after I finish with questions. At the, after the last council meeting, in regard to the million dollars that we intend to bond, that will be on the agenda tonight, I asked for a total, on the total debt that the city owes, permanent debt, bond debt, and I received totals going, adding up to 36 million. I don't see how that's possible at all, because in 2015, we finally figured out that the city's total debt, bond debt, was seven, there's 70 million. So I'd like an explanation about that. Gustavo, there, there was a decision tonight from the Monmouth County Prosecutor. I'd like to know how the city feels about that decision. It's also very worrying, the way it was worded. It doesn't say, doesn't seem to give much concern for reporters and the importance of witnessing these events from the police side as well as the protester side. And I think that we deserve some assurances in that department, especially with this, this gear that the police are, we're going to be approving funds for this gear. I'd like to know whether this, these are military gear, what kind of gear this is. The 50th anniversary that we just commemorated this past weekend, the uprising, thank you. The housing jobs recreation, these things have not changed since 50 years ago. These are still considerations for the west side. I'd like to know about rent stabilization, and also your, your position on the senior freeze, which is threatened now by the state government. And will you, will you address this in a resolution perhaps? And the payment of bills, 2022-04, I have a question about that. It doesn't look like that those amounts add up to the, the correct amount on that bill, cable TV advisory. I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Maureen, I'll try to answer as many as I can, and then if not, turn them over to Donna. Number one, it's a county initiative, not state, not city. We do not have the exact data on soon as we get it. I know after the freeholder talked to all the mayors, he was talking to all the Chamber of Commerce, so Sylvia will probably be on later, maybe she can say even more. As far as total debt, I'm not sure what the number is. If you said 36 million, it used to be 70 million, maybe they didn't throw in the utilities, I'm just guessing. As far as the prosecutor's decision, I'm not sure. I read it quickly, but if you have questions about the prosecutor's decisions, don't ask us as the prosecutor. As far as protective gear, that's included bulletproof vests, which I think if any of your relatives were a police officer, you would want them to have them. Rent stabilization, I didn't get the questions, I'll turn that over to Donna. Senior freeze, I think it's tough, tell the governor. Bills, not sure your question, I'll turn that over to Donna.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Deputy Chief Thompson is on the call, so while I'm answering the other questions, if you can unmute him, he can answer the questions regarding the, the gear for the police. I think, Maureen, the question you had asked our CFO about the debt, that was debt that we bonded for, and that's where that $36 million. So the other, so that 70 million number that you got several years ago was probably a bond anticipation note, and that's on, on, that debt that's, that has not been bonded yet. So that's probably where the, the confusion is. And I think the mayor answered the rest. Is Deputy Chief Thompson un, unmuted yet?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead, Deputy Chief.
Okay, just, I guess you want a description as to what type of gears being purchased with the GoFundMe amount of money that was donated? That would be protective helmets and shields in, for instances, with a large scale unrest and riots to protect the officers. That's all they'd be used for, they're not normally deployed otherwise. As far as Gustavo Martinez, that investigation was done by the Monmouth County Prosecutor's office, agreed, the investigation outcome was agreed by the Attorney General's office, and any- The investigation outcome was agreed by the Attorney General's Office. And anything further, I don't know if I should answer about it. There's pending litigation.
Thank you, Deputy Chief.
Hey, Donna, it's John. I think she, I think Maureen had one question. It was question number five on rent stabilization, and I missed the question. So I don't know if anybody else picked up the question.
Yep, I can answer that. We're in the process of obtaining a proposal from our affordable housing planner. We hope to have it within the next couple of weeks. Once we have that proposal, we'll be able to put it on the agenda for approval and then start the process.
Next.
Okay, I am calling upon 5542. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Diana Petet, and I live at 321 Sunset Avenue. And I was very encouraged to hear about Mike Manzella's continuation, plan to continue having the open streets downtown. It's such a lively place to be during these hard times, and it seems to be benefiting local businesses. But I do have a word of caution or concern is that it is, there's a lot of people gathering in density, a lot of people not wearing face masks. And I know that that can't be enforced, I don't believe. But what concerns me more is I often see our police not wearing face masks. And it would be great if they were wearing them as a, to, as a good role model for how we should all be operating downtown outside in public. If you could comment on that, please.
Are you finished with your questions?
Yes.
Yes, and thank you very much, and thank you for all you do. Let me see. I don't know. I totally agree with you. I believe every city employee should be wearing a mask 24/7 when they're outside, when they're inside in an office by themselves. That's different. I totally agree with you. So that's something we'll try to pick up on. And as far as like enforcing in the future, as far as people downtown not wearing masks, the governor's like, kind of like half, 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 half. Oh, please, I'm going to make it a law. But it's not really a law again. So I don't even know if we can enforce it because of what he said today. So, you know, he went on Channel 2 News on Sunday and said like, the president should do it. So he got called to task on Monday. So he did something today, and we're not sure what he did, except saying, well, I want you to wear them even more, and we'll get back to you. But we'll look into it, I'm sure, our chief, deputy chief, and if we can enforce it, we'll enforce it. If we can't, we're stuck in the same place we were a month ago. Again, thank you for everything you do, and your event's going to be approved.
Okay, we are moving on to Pam Lamberton. Please state your name and address for the record. Pam Lamberton, please state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Pam Lamberton, 321 Sunset Avenue. I'm in full support of the open streets. I think Mike Manzella is doing a great job with it. And I think we all realize it's a work in progress, and things are going to change as we move along. But I think you're doing a great job with it, and I think it's terrific. I've been down there, and it's actually fun to be down there. Could you please define a canopy? Could you please explain resolution 210? And I just wanted to note that on the lot on Ocean Avenue between 6 and 7 and the boardwalk, there is debris surrounded by a chain link fence. And we all know that lot. Nothing has been approved to be built there. So can they please take down the chain link fence and remove the debris? And also question, the construction that's going on in the corner of Main and Madison, next to Johnny Macs, which I think is also a part of Johnny Macs, I would ask the city manager to just make sure that they have a construction permit for that, because my understanding is, it's currently in front of the planning board awaiting approval to get a permit. So I was just wondering if she could look into that. And that's all. Thank you.
You've completed your questions, Pam?
Yes, I have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me skip the definition. I'll let Fred factor that. As far as the lot you're talking about, we've had other complaints about that. It's a privately owned lot. If they get a permit to put up a fence, they can put up a fence. They've been told by the city that it has to be kept neat, and code will be on top of it. It's not, it will be issued summonses, but everything they're doing is perfectly legal. As far as the construction for Johnny Mac, I believe I'll let Donna look into it also. But I believe they're continuing their construction, which was approved at prior planning boards. And they have an application before the planning board that was canceled and not heard. So, but right now, they're just continuing the construction they were doing before they were shut down with COVID-19. And Fred, if you want to define what a canopy is, and then we'll go from there.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So there is a definition of the term canopy included in resolution number 2020-213, which is on the council's agenda this evening. The definition was worked upon by myself, along with the city manager, the city engineer, and our risk management team. So the definition reads as follows. For purpose of this resolution, a temporary canopy shall be defined as follows. A cloth, fabric, or other type of flexible, non-solid temporary covering, which is attached to poles that are affixed in a non-permanent manner to the ground, and which temporary covering is suspended in the air horizontally and hangs over and shades or shelters from the elements a portion of the private property, which is the site of a restaurant, bar, or other type of food or dining establishment located within the city of Asbury Park, including but not limited to parking lot areas. The term canopy shall not include any type of covering that hangs in a vertical manner downward from the horizontal covering, and which would impede ventilation and/or airflow and cause the canopy to become enclosed like a tent. Tents, as defined in the zoning chapter of the Asbury Park City Code, are considered to be temporary structures and are specifically not permitted under the temporary canopy application process. That is the proposed definition that's in the resolution that council will be considering this evening.
Thanks, Fred.
Okay, Donna, Donna, I think Pam also asked for a brief description of 2020-210.
Right, that's the citizen participation plan. And what is, that is part of our CDBG funding. It's our notification tool that allows for the citizens to participate in our CDBG process. This plan is something that had to be modified a bit due to COVID, and that's why it's on the agenda tonight. HUD requires all grantees, i.e. Asbury Park, to have public hearings to get the citizens' participation. These are done twice a year, once for the annual action plan, then the consolidated annual performance evaluation report. So there'll be a public notice with a hearing date. It's printed in Asbury Park Press, in the Coaster, and also be posted on our website. And that's why we had to put this resolution on for tonight due to COVID.
Does that complete the comments?
Yeah, and Donna, you will, you will look into...
Yeah, John, yeah, I will certainly. Yep, I will confirm. There's a, and Pam, if there's not a permit, we will shut them down.
Thank you.
Yep.
We are moving on to 6942. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, it's Carrie Butch, 500 Deal Lake Drive. I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that you're doing on getting the COVID testing in Asbury Park. I think that's fabulous. I know that there's currently COVID testing at BNA, which costs money, and also Neptune Rite Aid that you have to drive through. So having it at the train station for free is great. I'm wondering if maybe we could consider also getting antibody testing. I know the city of Patterson is doing antibody testing, and a lot of people are interested in that. So I'm wondering if we could do that. One is that, and another thing I wanted to just mention is that it is the 50th anniversary, the commemoration of the riots in Asbury Park, the civil unrest in Asbury Park, the uprising. And I wanted to say thank you to the Springwood Avenue Rising Committee that's been doing a fabulous job under the leadership of Diane Shelton, Nina Summerlin, and Pam Major. I wanted to say thank you, and also to everybody who's participated in that project, because I know it's had a very, very wide, they cast a very, very wide net. And those fabulous interviews that were done by the Asbury Park Press, by the Coaster, by Maureen Nevin. There's been a lot of activity over the past week. It is from July 4th through the 10th. I did want to just say thank you to everybody that's participating in that, in that commemoration. I'm not sure. I just want to say thank you.
Your comments complete, Carrie?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Carrie, it's John. I thank you very much. I just wanted to, you know, and sometimes, you know, we don't brag enough. We don't do this. I'm going to tell you truthfully, Eileen, Yvonne, and Donna have been working since the beginning of this crisis pandemic to try to get testing in Asbury Park. And at one point, the county said, okay, you can do it, but it's going to cost you X amount of hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we didn't have the money. So just because of the fortitude and the tenacity of Eileen, Yvonne, and Donna, we won them over. It's going to be in Asbury Park. So I got to give those three all the credit in the world. Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to 3350. Please state your name and address for the record.
We're asking only 400 Deal Lake Drive, 5B Asbury Park, New Jersey. It's Sandtender. Is this public portion or commenting on an ordinance?
This is the public portion.
Okay. I'd like to start off by saying, I don't agree with anything you're talking about, all the self-congratulation and thank yous. Asbury Park, I live here full-time. It's been a coronavirus violation mandate epicenter. The bars, the boardwalk, people walk up and down with tequila pineapples. There's whiskey, beer bottles all over the beach, syringes, spent condoms, loud noise, crime everywhere. I don't know where you come up with these Twilight Zone pictures. You bring in the news, they take a picture at 7 o'clock at night down at the North End. Why don't you bring it in during the day when people are taking their clothes off on the beach and hugging and kissing, and no masks, and you can't breathe from the smoke and the crack and the vape smoke. A child endangerment. People crapping under the convention hall, urinating everywhere, vomit everywhere. People sitting on Cookman Avenue on the street, eating in smelly vomit, dog urine, feces, sun-baked stink roads. I don't know where you come off congratulating yourself. And then that thing you pulled with the governor, you made Asbury the talk of the country as a radical, always radical, always for bars, alcohol, drugs, marijuana. That's what you're known for. And look at this place spiking. Asbury Park Police, all these shootings, fireworks, nothing's going on Nixel. The press is covering everything up. Ellen Carroll, Mike Booth, I don't know if the other lady's around, Glad, Tapiani, Michael Casey, the PIO.
One minute remaining.
You can't get through to anybody. They're covering everything up. There's shootings everywhere, stabbings, robberies, rapes, arrests. Nothing's getting in the newspaper. Your code officer, again, it's a month now, been reported in the recordings with the city manager. She threatened the lives of some people in Sandtender, myself included. She's caught on a recording, which your city manager has, threatening me and some other residents, and your city manager's doing nothing. Nothing at all. And you know what? The prosecutor knows about it, and the prosecutor's doing nothing about it. So that's what we get from how another big problem with a city manager. And you keep congratulating them. For what? And then how about Kendall, right? Under investigation for hitting a kid, loses his license because he's brutal with kids in the school system. And what do you do? You suspend a high school principal instead of him.
Time's up.
Why don't you get rid of him? He's a child in danger.
Your time is up.
You got to... Thank you. Next.
We are on to Michelle Gladden. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Michelle Gladden, 206 Second Avenue. Tonight, I just wanted to comment on the arts initiative that has been happening in town. Part of my role in this community is the executive director of the Asbury Park Arts Council. And so to touch on what Springwood Avenue Rising is doing, there's been a mural campaign to add art to the West Side of our city, particularly the Southwest. As Carrie mentioned earlier, this has been an ongoing, Springwood Avenue Rising has been an ongoing initiative with members of the city, businesses, and organizations involved. And this mural campaign is the first of a few that will be happening over the next few years. Springwood Avenue Rising will also, under the tutelage of the three women that Carrie mentioned, will continue to have some discussions, roundtable discussions and programming moving into the next year. What I also wanted to talk about was the art on the arts blocks, which is the 700th block that happened this past weekend. We had a great response from those who were from passersby, who watched as artist Lisa Bagwell on Friday, Charles Trot on Saturday, and two budding artists from our community on Sunday did chalk art in the street. It was well-received. There was not any infractions on social distancing. And I really wanted to commend our community, particularly those businesses on the block, for supporting the initiative. When the two young men who were 19 and 20 from our community did their program, they were met by Eileen Chapman and very thrilled that they got to meet and speak with her. They were introduced to Jill Ricci and Jennifer Hampton, who own Parlo Gallery. And I have to say that the time they spent with those kids meant a lot to the kids. They compensated on it later. Also, Cookman Creamery and Malcolm from Heaven, really supported the kids.
One minute remaining.
Thanks. Really came out and supported the kids and interacted with them. And I just felt very proud to be a part of the community this weekend as we rolled out the first leg of our arts initiative. Lastly, I just wanted to put in everybody's mind if we could possibly have those canopies when we do our special arts event, because it does get extremely hot. And I know that we don't, we're on public property, but I just wanted to pitch, make a pitch for that to be part of our arts rollout. Thank you again.
Does that complete your comments and questions?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Next.
We are on to 3609. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, this is Joseph Romanski, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Sandtender.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I was wondering if a couple issues could be handled in regarding the parking and speeding on Park Avenue. On Park Avenue, when the people are coming across the bridge from Deal, they're speeding down Park Avenue and using it as a throughway as they're using Third and Fourth. And I wanted to know if they could look into possibly putting speed bumps, because I myself have almost been T-boned at Athan Park several times. And also, the parking enforcement is not really doing their job. There's people parking all over and doing whatever they wish, and they're parking in front of the fire plug specifically on Athan Grand Avenue, and no tickets are being given out. And as I mentioned before, the drugs continue at the Sandtender, and the police are called, and the board has been notified. And I'm told there's going to be results. I'm told it's going to be monitored, and it's not. And it's starting to amp up again, and to the point where I'm getting contact high in my own unit. There's also, what I don't understand is we're all told that we have to social distance and wear masks. And I'm seeing people wander around town, being out in restaurants, being in bars, walking on the boardwalk, and there's no masks on, there's no social distancing, and law enforcement's doing nothing about it. And there's some real concerns, especially at the Sandtender. And I was told, it's been brought up to code enforcement and to construction code about the drain pipes that where they put the cutout. And they were supposed to put the drain pipes up weeks ago, and then I was told from construction that they would be up by June...
One minute remaining.
That they would be up by June 29th. It's now July 8th, and the pipes are still not up, and the building's suffering water damage. And we just had a $20,000 assessment And we just had a $20,000 assessment just from my unit alone, and there's other people in the building that have larger units in mind, and there's nothing being done, and it doesn't seem like code enforcement is responding. There's no follow-up, and there's poor follow-up. And also, when some of the police do come out, they laugh, and they joke about it and say there's nothing they can do about the drug. And then there are other police that say, yes, it is a problem, and they're aware that the Sandtender's a problem. So I'm very concerned. I'm very scared. Safety issues. I have a respiratory condition, and I have a heart condition. And again, the drugs are being taken as a joke, and I don't get it. As far as I heard, marijuana and smoked drugs are still against the law.
Your time is up. Is there any response?
Yeah, sorry, I was on mute. And damn, my phone's gone dead. Thank you, sir. I know Deputy Chief Thompson's on the call. So as far as enforcement, as far as parking on your area, as far as fire hydrants and everything else, I'm sure he'll jump on that as soon as possible. The Sandtender, I'm sure Donna will check with construction to look into that. And I'm also sure Deputy Chief will also look into the complaints about marijuana. As far as masks, Asbury Park, like 554 other cities left in the quandary with what the governor says and what the governor means. So we don't know if we can enforcement, enforce it. We don't know what can be enforced. He announced it today. He announced it early this morning. He announced the one o'clock press conference. He said he would get out more, if when asked by reporters, he would get out more information. We have not gotten that information yet. Once we get that information out, it'll give our police department a better kind of understanding of what they can and cannot do, because they have to go by his executive orders again. So I thank you, and I'm sure we'll look into all your complaints.
Not seeing any other hands raised? Motion to close the meeting to the public.
Move to close, Eileen Chapman?
Second, Yvonne Clayton.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed. The meeting is now closed to the public. We are on to the minutes. I have the municipal council minutes of the executive meeting of June 24th, the municipal council meeting minutes of the regular meeting of June 4th. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
Okay, we will now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
It appears he may have dropped off.
Okay. All right, we will move on to individual resolutions. We are on to Resolution 2020-204, which is a resolution approving the payment of bills. Councilmember Chapman is abstaining from 20-00710 and 20-00776. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Quinn.
Second, Clayton.
Second, Kendall.
I will now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Have we lost the mayor?
I think we have.
Do you want me?
I think he said previously his phone was dying.
Yeah, I heard him say that also. Shall we move on, or?
Let's pause for one second.
Okay.
I'll call him.
I got you back? All right.
Hello? Yeah, I did something stupid. I thought I could cut off the pictures on the screen. I didn't know that would cut off my phone also.
Okay. All right, John.
I'm back on.
We are on to Resolution 2020-204, which is a resolution approving the payment of bills?
No.
Alrighty. We are on to Resolution 2020-205, a resolution authorizing the purchase of protective gear for the police department. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Do I have a second?
Second, Quinn.
Okay, we will now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
I'm sorry, and I skipped Councilmember Clayton.
Yvonne.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-206, a resolution authorizing the purchase of body armor vests for the police department. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
More a second.
Second.
Okay, I now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-206, a resolution authorizing the purchase of body armor vests for the police department. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
More a second.
Second.
Okay, I now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-207, an amendment of a contract with Motorola Solutions, Inc. Group for Police Department Radios. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Clayton.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-208, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the 2020 budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 48:4-87, Chapter 159 Clean Communities Grant. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Quinn.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are now on to Resolution 2020-209, adopting the Monmouth County Home Consortium Fiscal Year 2020-2024 Five-Year Strategy for Housing and Community Development and 2020 Annual Action Plans. Do I have a motion?
Move it. Second, Clayton.
We'll now move on to the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-210, a resolution approving the Citizens' Participation Plan for Programs Included in the Consolidated Plan for Community Development Programs. Do we have a motion?
Move it, Clayton.
Move it, Kendall.
Do I have a second?
Second, Kendall.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-211, a resolution approving special events applications. Do we have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
More a second.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-212, which is a resolution rescinding the liquor license transfer from Six Gear LLC to 614 Liquor License LLC, person to person and place to place. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Moore. Second, Kendall.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2020-213, a resolution amending Resolution Number 202187, adopted on June 10th, 2020, and entitled as follows. Resolution temporarily relaxing existing ordinances and procedures associated with review and approval for existing restaurants and food establishments and retail businesses to offer outdoor dining and outdoor displays. Do I have a motion?
This is the one about the temporary canopy, just FYI.
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to ordinances. Ordinances for introduction. We have ordinance number 2020-20, an ordinance establishing a restricted parking space for use by handicapped persons at property located at 1215 and a half Monroe Avenue in the City of Asbury Park, and amending and supplementing Section 7-36, entitled Handicap Parking of Chapter 7 Traffic of the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey, with a public hearing date of July 22nd, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Resolution 2020-21, a resolution approving the ordinance establishing salaries of certain employees within the City of Asbury Park, Monmouth County, New Jersey, with a public hearing date of July 22nd, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Move it, Chapman.
Second, Clayton.
Roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Abstain.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, we are on to second readings, public hearing. We have the, do I have a motion to open the public hearing on 2020-19, which is a bond ordinance providing for the construction of a parking garage at the Transportation Center of City Hall, Phase 1 Transportation Utility Improvement, buying in the City of Asbury Park in the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, appropriating $1 million therefore and author, and authorizing the issuance of $1 million in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Do I have a motion to open 2020?
Move to open. Eileen Chapman?
Do I have a second?
Kendall, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. The meeting is now open to the public on 2020-19. Members of the public may participate by dialing *9 on your phone to raise your hand in the meeting. I will call your name or the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. Your comments can only be about the ordinance being presented for public hearing. Do we have any comments from council or city manager before we take comments from the Okay, not hearing any?
I'm sorry, it's John.
Okay.
Yes, before we go to the public, let's either have Donna or Fred explain it, so everybody that's going to talk about it knows what they're talking about. And just as a side note, I just got an email, or whatever it is, saying that Rita was trying to call and couldn't get in. So Rita, if you're out there, you can get in this one. And if not, any questions you couldn't get in, text it to Donna or myself, and we'll answer all your questions tomorrow. I apologize if this happens to anybody. Again, Zoom is not perfect. We're trying our best. But before we go on to this, either Fred or Donna explain it.
Oh, he dropped it off. Okay, thank you.
I can jump in, and perhaps Donna, feel free to comment as well. So this is a bond ordinance appropriating the amount of $1 million relating to the construction of a parking garage at the Transportation Center of City Hall, Phase 1, a transportation utility improvement. The ordinance was drafted by our Bond Counsel, Archer Greiner, and it is now up for a public hearing this evening. I'm not sure what more you would like discussed about that, but Donna, feel free to comment if there's anything else you wish to say. I think we may have lost Donna. Let me just try and get her back on here. Hold on one second.
Hey, Mike, Donna thinks she's muted. I don't know if you saw that.
Yeah, she's unmuted. But I don't see her phone here anymore, actually. Oh, there she is. Hold on.
Hello?
We got you now.
We hear you.
Can you hear me? Sorry, I don't know what's going on. I don't know what I missed.
We're going to the bond ordinance for the $1 million for the parking garage, and Fred gave a brief explanation what this is about. If you want to, not, you didn't hear what he said, if you want to like expand on it, or you just want to wait and hear the questions?
I'm sure. That's fine. Go ahead. I'm sure Fred did fine.
Okay, so then it's open to the public.
Okay. I am, just a reminder to the public, your comments can only be about the ordinance being presented for public hearing. I am calling upon Maureen Nevin. Please state your name and address for the record.
This is Maureen Nevin, D.O.A. Court, Asbury Park. Okay, I want to go back to the total debt, because whenever we bond for anything, we should consider the, how much we owe to begin with. And in 2015, the city was carrying more than $70 million in long-term bond debt.
Maureen, Maureen, it's John. You're making a statement about the city's debt, and it's specifically about this one bond ordinance.
I have a question, though.
Okay.
Before we bond for this, we need to know what we owe. And the explanation from the office, the city manager, about it being a, the $70 million balance being a bond anticipation note is not accurate. And we need to know how much we owe. And we should do it before we agree to this bond issue. I also asked about the $53 million, which we bonded in order to help I-Star pay for the infrastructure.
What does that have to do with this one?
What it has to do with it is, before you go out and spend money or borrow more money, you need to know how much you owe already. And the city apparently has no idea how much they owe. They sent me an accounting that shows we owe $36 million in bond debt. That can't possibly be correct.
Okay, Maureen, we talked about that earlier, and we said we will correct that tomorrow the next day, and so.
After we've passed this bond issue. Is that correct?
Correct.
You're not going to table it until we find out how much debt we owe?
No.
So mayor, if mayor, if I could-
Fiduciary, uh, responsibility. I don't think that's exercising fiduciary responsibility. Um, and I'd like to know- How are the, uh, is the parking authority, um, going to contribute? The funds that the parking authority has, will they be contributed to this parking garage?
There is, there is no parking authority in Asbury Park.
Okay, um, what is the entity that, uh, collects the meters, the, the, the parking, uh, fees and fines?
The Transportation Authority, so it can pay for things like this garage, which they're going to pay for, correct.
They are going to pay for it.
Donna, Donna tried to answer part of your question, and why this has to be done this time. So let Donna answer them, we'll go back to your questions. You will not be cut off.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so this ordinance has already been approved. Um, unfortunately, there was an issue with the noticing. Uh, this comes back from twenty nineteen. And answer, Maureen, to your debt, you spoke to our CFO, there is thirty-six million, one hundred and sixty-nine, four hundred and fifteen dollars in principal and interest. That is the current bonded debt of the City of Asbury Park.
It can't possibly be, I'll, I'll have to continue this with the, uh, oh, because-
Certified, that's our certified debt from our audit. If you have other questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but they don't pertain to this bond ordinance.
Well, I think I've already made my point on that, so.
Okay.
No, but again, Maureen, I thi, I think what Donna was saying, or tried to convey, was this was something that was done last year, and there was a little glitch that wasn't done right. So we're cleaning up the language, and it has to be done.
I, I, I see the problem, the, the issue there, but, I mean, my, my, uh, my fate remains. You can't, you can't borrow unless you know how much you already owe. It's not, it's not a fiduciary way to go about things.
I, I, I understand your question, and Donna just said thirty-six million, one hundred and forty-five, eighty-nine. I, I would like to see that also, because honestly, I thought it was higher than that myself. So, uh, we'll-
Well, the fifty-three million alone, we know we, we, um, we bonded-
That's, that's not, that's, that's the-
Restrain from the ordinance, so we'll, we'll handle that tomorrow off conversation. We can have a three-way conference call.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Maureen.
I am calling upon Keith, please state your name and address for the record, and please keep in mind your comments can only be about the ordinance being presented for public hearing. Keith?
Melody, that might be, that may be Rita.
Okay, I'm looking at Keith.
Rita said she was having problems getting on, so maybe it is Rita. Can you open her up?
I am, I am on, but nobody can handle you.
Go ahead, we can hear you, Rita.
We can hear you, Rita. It says Keith, though, when you call.
It says Keith, yes.
We just picked that.
Oh, you picked Keith instead of me, I don't like that. Uh, no, anyway, uh, this is the ordinance that's been around since twenty nineteen. It's still the one million dollars that we keep talking about.
Correct.
I was just wondering, uh, I, any of the businesses going to contribute to this? Being it's, you know, being where you're putting it, it'll be mostly for business people? I mean, do the rest of the taxpayers have to be involved with it? I guess so, but-
At this point in time, uh-
No? But, I mean, if they survive, if, if they survive twenty twenty, they should contribute to it, because they're the ones that are going to be wanting it, right? Including Mr. Sacksman, Mr. Sacksman, because he doesn't provide enough parking. So he might contribute to it, too.
Okay, Rita.
Okay.
I, I gotta cut you short, just questions on the ordinance itself without personality.
All right, I know what it's about now, thank you. But I didn't get heard before.
Okay, uh-
I'd want you to know.
And Karen, Karen let us know.
Rita, I'll give you a call tomorrow.
All right, okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Bye. Bye.
Rita, you, Rita, you know what, you know I get up at six, call me.
All right, but I want to be heard. It's okay, okay.
Well, next time, call on your own phone.
Yeah, no, I did.
Or, or, or tell me.
So, I, you know, I'm getting, I'm getting modem to Zoom now, I like Zoom. I press star nine, and I get my, raise my hand. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rita.
We, I am calling upon Ernest McNolli, please state your name and address for the, for the record, and please remember your comments can only be about the ordinance being presented for public hearing.
Ernest McNolli, four hundred Deal Lake Drive, Apartment five D, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Uh, I don't believe that, um, the way this is being bonded is, um, is appropriate. I think it should be tabled at least, but, you know, that's, that's just my opinion. I also don't agree with the whole, uh, scope and sequence of how it was done, but you say, well, you have to speak on the ordinance in real time. And in real time, I don't see how, at least based on a few other people and myself, why you wouldn't table this and let the public really be fully engaged in knowing every time you commit us to bond. I mean, it's like Bonnie and Clyde here.
Okay, okay, you're, Mr. McNolli, you're straying, and again, making excuses.
Why am I straying? You're talking about a million dollars, and, and me personally? I don't, I don't want that garage there.
Okay, that's a, that's a good question, you don't want it, okay, next.
Well, what does that mean, am I going to get an answer?
That means you asked the question next.
Next? Well, why don't I call you at six o'clock tomorrow morning, and we'll talk about it?
That's fine, I've been telling you-
Not for you, you never have. Hey mayor, sure. Yeah, really? Why don't you just tell me goddamn myself again? Yeah, like I can call you, mayor. You're running a real sham show there for the public. Good night.
Please keep your comments regarding the ordinance.
Nope, nope, cut Mr. McNolli off, he's out of order.
Not, okay, I am not seeing any other hands raised, a motion to close the public hearing on twenty twenty dash nineteen.
Move it, Kendall.
Second, Chapman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed on twenty twenty dash nineteen, a motion to adopt twenty twenty dash nineteen. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
More, move it. Second, Moore.
Okay, roll call, Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, are there any additional comments, uh, before we move for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hey John, this is John, this is Kendall, can you call me? Hello?
Yeah.
John, could you call me, um, in a few minutes?
Yes, I'll call you.
Motion to adjourn.
Move it, Kendall.
Second?
Second, Chapman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.